Okay, I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Trent Magid, David Rosacher, Jeffrey Moore, Michael Pate, Patrick Morris. This is Patrick's first meeting. Welcome to the Board, Patrick. Christine Carnes and I am Greg Rosenbaum, Vice Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanzlau, Planning Director, Eric England, Acting Planning Manager, Mike Carter, Planning Board Administrator, Sherry Rockwell, Planning Department Assistant Director. From the Law Department is Jennifer Taylor, who is not quite here yet, and Ricky Flott, our Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. This Board met this morning, reviewed all of the cases, and visually inspected sites. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us, right down here, and you're welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases are perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial, have already been heard, or been recommended for layover, and therefore will be read and voted on without the opportunity for your testimony. If you wish to testify, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. When each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard in the order in which it appears on the regular agenda after we go through the consent cases. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant, and after the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to ten minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information, and try not to repeat what has previously been said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. So in that regard, please remain silent while seated, and you can take time now to turn your cellphones off. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to the Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made a part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all that information to the Board as well to the rest of the Republic, to the public. Rezoning matters are an exception to this rule. There are no changes to our consent agenda, and before I go through the consent agenda, we are going to make a change to our regular agenda. After we go through the first case, which is on for administration only, we will hear case number seven. The applicant has requested that we move that up, and they have a plane to catch to get out of town, so we will move. Case number seven will start right after the administrative meeting at case number one. Okay. I'll get started with the consent agenda. First case is case number two. It's C-10-03-203. The applicant is Lockwood Development. It's on consent for approval. Request is approval of a major amendment to the mixed-use district development agreement for Blondo 108 Business Park. This was laid over from our December 6 meeting. Location is northwest of 108th and Blondo Streets. Does anybody wish to have this removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll move on to agenda item number four. It is case C-10-17-188, C-12-17-189. Applicant is 228 Skyline LLC. It's on consent for approval. The request is a revised preliminary plat and final plat approval of the Preserve, formerly Highland Ranch, a subdivision outside the city limits with waivers to Section 53-8 2B cul-de-sacs and cul-de-sac length, Section 53-8 2G street width, street grade, and minimum stopping site distance, Section 53-8 3 block length, Section 53-9 3 curb and gutter, Section 53-9 9 sidewalks, and Section 53-9 10 street lights, along with rezoning from AG to DR. Portions of the property are located in the Flood Fringe Overlay District. Location, southwest of 222nd and F Street. Does anybody wish to have this case removed from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number five, case C-10-18-013, C-12-18-014. Applicant is Smithfield Packaged Meats Corporation. It's on consent for approval. The request is preliminary and final plat approval of MCC Smithfield Edition, a minor plat located inside the city limits with rezoning from GO and HI to GO and HI. Location, south of Edward B. Gomez Avenue and east of 33rd Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Move on to agenda item number eight. It is case C-10-00-040, C-10-18-011, C-12-18-012. Applicant is Craig Falk. It's on for approval. Request preliminary and final plat approval of Greyhawk Replat 4, a minor plat inside the city limits with rezoning from MU to DR and MU, along with a major amendment to the Mixed Use District Development Agreement for Greyhawk. Location is northeast of 147th and Spencer Streets. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Case number nine, it's case C-10-18-019. Applicant is KTM Management, Inc. It's on for approval. Request is rezoning from DR and R2 to GI. Portions of the property are located within the Floodway Overlay District. Location, 2720 Keystone Drive. Does anyone wish to have this removed from consent? Seeing none. Agenda item number 10, case C-8-18-020. Applicant is Christ for the City International. It's on for approval. Request is approval of a special use permit to allow large group living in a CC district. Location, 5835 North 90th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 12 is case C-7-96-135, C-7-88-158. Applicant is Todd Schuderman. I hope I said that right. It's on for approval. Request is approval of a major amendment to a conditional use permit to allow convalescent services in a R7 district. Location is 6404 North 70th Plaza. Does anyone wish to have this case removed? Okay, seeing none. We have read through the consent cases. Is there a motion for consent?
I'll make a motion for approval of case numbers 2, 4, 5, 8, 9, 10, and 12.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Ricky, will you record the vote, please?
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacher?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Okay, the cases that we just read are on for consent. Those cases have been voted on. No further action will be taken today. You're welcome to stay, or you can leave. It's up to you, but those cases are done for the day. Okay, for administrative meeting only, we have agenda item number one. It is case C-10-17-218, C-12-17-219. Applicant is Steve Shampoo. The request is final plat approval of the Town Homes of Village Point, a subdivision outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and R6. Location, southwest of 168th Street and Western Avenue. This is on for administrative. There is no public testimony. If the Board doesn't have any questions or comments, I'll go to Eric for the Department's recommendation.
Okay. So the preliminary plat for this case came through the Planning Board on October 4, and then was subsequently approved December 19 by the City Council. Final plat for 120 lots. There are a few items that will need to be addressed with the applicant before this goes to City Council, but the Department is recommending approval of the final plat subject to the conditions of preliminary plat approval and addressing the four items listed in the recommendation report prior to forwarding to City Council.
I'll make a motion to approve the final plat subject to the conditions of preliminary plat approval and addressing the following items, the following four items, prior to forwarding to the request to City Council as stated in the recommendation.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Ricky, will you please record the vote?
Rosacher?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, as I stated earlier, we're going to move agenda item number seven. We'll go next. Agenda item number seven is case C-10-18-015, C-12-18-016. Applicant is New West Farm Holdings LLC, Jeffrey A. Silver. Request preliminary plat approval of West Farm Replat 4, a subdivision outside the city limits with a waiver of Section 53-84A lot depth, along with rezoning from R4, R7, and MU to R4, R7, and MU, and a major amendment to the Mixed Use District Development Agreement for West Farm. Location is southwest of 144th Street and West Dodge Road. May we hear from the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, members of the staff, I'm Jay Noddle with Noddle Companies, 2285 South 67th Street in Exarban Village. First, thank you for accommodating our travel schedule today, and Mr. Morris, welcome to the Board. We'll all thank you in advance for your service. We hope you enjoy your time on the Board. We are here today because we've been making some progress with our West Farm project, and some of you may recall that when the first approvals were provided by the Village of Boyz Town and the City of Omaha, there were parts of the project that weren't as well-defined as other parts of the project, and specifically in the center here. In the time, the short amount of time that has passed since those approvals took place, we've made an awful lot of progress with the project and kind of have been collecting little items that needed to be sort of tweaked along the way. Might be a right-of-way issue or further definition of, again, in particular, the lots in the center. We now have a great plan, we believe, and we're getting ready to close a few transactions which will allow us to start a lot of different construction projects on the site in the early summer. I should also tell you that the infrastructure work, both on the site and off the site, has advanced really very nicely. We were blessed to have six or seven weeks of additional nice working weather here in the fall, and I guess we're paying for it now, but in any case, I really don't have anything to add. We've spent a lot of time with the staff, even as recently as yesterday, and I'd just be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry. Are you an opponent? Okay, come forward. State your name and address, please, sir.
John Fesh, 15004 Pacific Street, Jackson Street, sorry, just north of Pacific. I've spoken to three members of the Planning Department, all of which very nice gentlemen, but none could give me any specificity as to the nature of these changes that Mr. Noddle described. It appeared that it was along the lines of carte blanche, that there have been, you know, no degree of any exact types of things that were going to happen, and so it's nebulous in terms of change from this to change to that. And so I guess I'm not necessarily a proponent or an opponent until I know exactly what the change is going to be.
Is there a specific concern you may have with this project?
Just the ambiguity of the request.
Okay.
Yeah. One of the individuals, again, all very nice people, indicated that there was going to be an assisted living complex to the north of my property, northeast of my property. That was going to be between four and five stories. And on the surface, without, again, more specifics to that, I would object just to the height of that, and that was a change that he had indicated that, I'm not sure what the first requested height was going to be, but just the concern of being four to five stories, it might feel like my property in my backyard, it'd be kind of official with people looking down. So obviously assisted living is not at the level at 10 o'clock at night where there's going to be lots of live partying or anything like that, so it's not a big concern over the use per se, but just the height and the increase in height. And that was really the only specific information that these three individuals were able to provide.
Is there a need to throw your noses in front of you?
Let's see.
Just use your finger.
Well, I think this is Jackson Street, so I live in a cul-de-sac. Not well drawn, but right in this area here.
Aren't there a huge amount, a grove of trees that, which shows the detention ponds? Aren't there's a lot of trees behind your house?
There are not a lot of trees. There are probably five or six trees behind my house.
Big trees?
To the east. Pardon me?
Big trees? Lot of cover?
They're probably about 30 feet tall, on average.
Can you currently see the dirt on the other side?
Pardon me?
Can you currently see the development through the trees?
Quite readily. Yeah, many of the trees have been crown lifted by one of the contractors of Mr. Noddle, and there's quite a bit of visibility to the dirt and the construction activity that's been taking place.
And this would be the most, in the winter, would be the most visibility you'd have, obviously.
Right. There are no evergreen or conifer trees in that area. They're all deciduous trees, and many of them have been pruned.
Mr. Noddle, do you want to show them where the assisted living's proposed?
First of all, I'm welcome to take a phone call from you anytime. You haven't called me, and your neighbors call all the time, so I'd be happy to answer questions, and I think it might have saved a little time. But what I want to say is that we've been asked for any height changes whatsoever. The area in here, west of Applied Parkway, between Applied Parkway and the property boundary was approved for 80 feet in height when the original zoning was done, so there is no change there. The assisted living project will go here, and it's actually the furthest back from any of the property lines of any development, any buildings within the entire project. So we're probably, this will be an approximate, but I would guess we're 200 to 250 feet back from the property line. So no height change, and the project is about as far back from the property line as it could possibly be. With respect to the trees, as you know, all of you enjoyed a wonderful stand of trees for all the years that everyone's been living next to this property. The unfortunate thing was the trees weren't cared for very well, and so one of the first things we did is came and went through the western property line and cleaned up the dangerous trees and the limbs that were dead and tried to sort of beautify it. Over a little bit of time, there'll be more trees planted along the borders. I don't know exactly where they'll be, but you're absolutely welcome to call me, and we can talk about it. I've probably met with 70 of your neighbors over time over the last couple of years, and I can't do it on a moment's notice, but we're happy to take a look at where your home is and see if there's something we can place in a certain spot that might be helpful. I don't make any promises other than I'm happy to answer a phone call, and we'll hop it out of Tahoe, and we'll go for a ride.
Thank you, Jay.
Mr. Noddle, I appreciate your willingness to mitigate the undesirable view. I actually have contacted your assistant a couple times, and he's been responsive, but again, the lack of specificity caused concern in my mind. And though I do appreciate that, I think some shrubs, as well as some evergreen trees that don't lose leaves in the fall, would be, would go a long way towards that. Now again, I'm sorry about the misinformation. Evidently, I was told, trying to get more information, that there was an increase in the projected height or from where it was originally designed to be upward. So again, that's still a concern, the height of the five-story building, that's still quite a tall building, so that would be a polite objection, if we want to put it that way. And then onto the other point, so I appreciate your willingness to put in some screening. The other point was, again, each of these individuals indicated that the majority of the changes were going to be pretty much geographically centered to the project, but again, there were no specifics given there. So at some point, it would be good to have some specifics along those lines. My understanding was, I went, I attended a meeting that Mr. Noddle gave a presentation at the St. Wenceslas Church, which I'm glad we got some information there, but there were a number of things that have seemingly disappeared from the project. One was an amphitheater, one was a, amphitheater still there? Okay, that's good.
Well, sir, we'll have Jay come back up. Go ahead and make your opposition points, and then we'll have Jay come up later.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
That's all right.
And also was the question about the walking trail. So those would be the other two things as well, is what's going to happen on the inside, the screening, and the walking trail. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. You bet. Just a second, Jay, I'm in a, are there, Dave?
Yeah, Mr. Fesh, I just want to, just make one comment, just may help you. Again, this is very preliminary, and as each one of these parcels starts to become reality, then actual plans come back for each one of those. They all have requirements as far as green space and trees and all that other kind of stuff, and so that specificity that you're looking for is, will be coming in the future.
Assisted living complex is probably better than a fraternity house, too.
So you're the lucky one.
Are there any others opposed? Seeing none, I'm going to close. Got another one? Please state your name and address, sir.
My name is Teta Bakal. I live 150 in White Cliff Drive, and I have a plan known that they can build a hotels next to my property. It does be 150 in Dodge and White Cliff. It does be three stories. That's how I know that we, hotels would over there. So it's my, if they take it all the property, boys' property, I'd be probably 50 feet from, from there, you know, building. You know, whatever you expect more, I do.
We'll give him the opportunity to come up there.
Yeah, and I am worried about it, just the crime and everything else, because right now I have barbed wire, the boy's up wire, that's, that's home. But right now, there's a lot of people walk around begging for, probably next to my door, you know. Everybody, hey, what are you looking at this? I am scared, I myself, and I am scared, you know, who never know who walk around, who do it, whoever do.
Can you show us where your house is, please? Can you tell where your house is on that drawing? Approximate.
You know, it was White Cliff, next to Boys' Up.
Yeah. You're just to the west.
Yeah, and Dodge, yeah. That's what it was. White Cliff and Dodge. This is my first house, and a lot of tree that was removed over there because the tree was old and dying everything else, you know. It's so much mess over there, it's no question about it. Usually I take care of all the property, the boys' side, the senior property, because there's nobody was doing, you know, there's, so, so I am, I am worried about, about this thing that's so height of the buildings that go straight to my windows. And for my safety, it's, because I live myself, my wife, so I, I have no family, so I don't know what to do. So that'd be okay, actually.
Thank you. Anybody else opposed? Nope? Oh, you want to come on down? You want to speak? If anybody else is opposed, you can come on down at this time and take your turn.
Hi, my name is Laura Kunkel, and I'm at 523 South 150th Circle. My property's within 20, 30 feet of this, and I'm concerned about the lack of specificity in this development so far, and I'm particularly concerned about the height of the buildings. I think that they're going to block all of our views, and I think they're really going to diminish all of our property values, and I'm concerned that this is going to start out, you know, very public, but I just think we're going to get left out of the later proceedings when they get more specific. So I want to make sure that we're all well-informed and all are sent letters if there are additional zoning changes, but I do have a big concern about the height of the assisted living facility and the office buildings. I think they're going to destroy our views and damage our property values.
Laura, have you been to the meetings like at St. Wenceslas or any of the other development meetings?
I went to the City Planning Department on Monday and talked to several members of the planning staff and had them show me the development, and they sent me the document that is probably part of the record here. So I've looked at that, but there are a lot of very tall buildings, it looks like, and I think that's going to damage all our property values as well as our views.
I can understand when you're next door to a farm or green space, and then all of a sudden it changes. You know, at the same time, hopefully you take solace in that there will be opportunities to be able to walk to shopping, restaurants, entertainment, pretty a lot of free entertainment over there, too, and so I can understand that you're getting so used to something, and we, as our city grows, when you have private property, that, you know, they have rights, too, and it's just, it's, I guess it's part of our city kind of getting better, but hopefully you'll, you'll take advantage of. Personally, I think that your housing values are going to go up over time, given all the amenities, and I understand we're not knowing what's exactly going to go, there's an issue, and I applaud you for going through the process and, you know, doing your homework and asking the questions.
So I do have another question. This property is considered outside of the City of Omaha because it was Boyz Town. So how is that going to improve our property values if they develop an area that's outside of the City of Omaha and I'm inside the City of Omaha as a property owner? What benefit do I?
You still have the, you know, let the planning board talk, their planning department talk as well, but you still have all the amenities that you don't currently currently have, and to be able to walk towards to groceries and entertainment and all that kind of stuff. If I was buying a house, that'd certainly be appealing to me.
But, see, that's why everybody's different. It's not appealing to me. I can drive to anything I need to get, but I have a lovely view now, but I may not have that lovely view shortly. And all of our houses are already being impacted by the construction in terms of the dust being kicked up and all that other stuff. So, you know, I'm expecting another ten to fifteen years of annoyance, and then I think the outcome from that is going to be a blocked view and a diminished property line, so I'm concerned.
Understand.
We'll let Eric address the dust as we go along. Any more testimony? Okay, thank you. Are there any others opposed? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Jay, would you want to come back up and address some of the?
Yeah, let me, thank you. Let me try to address everything I heard. First, in terms of changes with the project, there really aren't any changes that we're asking for. Technically speaking, as I mentioned earlier, these four very large blocks were planted as one lot when the zoning was done in 2017. What we're now doing is providing you a great deal of specificity actually on what can happen in those four blocks and planning it so that development can begin. In terms of amenities, the trail system that we've been talking about for about a year and a half has not changed at all in terms of it being diminished. If anything, it's been enhanced a little bit. All of the drawings show trails around the perimeter, they show a bridge, a pedestrian bridge over Pacific Street as it always has, and then trails throughout the development, so no changes with trails. In terms of the other public amenities, and specifically the park, much further definition on the park space now. It does include a very significant public amphitheater that is still sized to accommodate a crowd of around six thousand people with ultimately a full band shell. There's a kids' component, there's a dogs' component in the park. This is showing what can be a public market and a food hall in the park. So I think the amenities are very much alive with more definition than we had in the past. In terms of the height, we aren't asking for any changes in the height whatsoever from what was previously approved. The area, as I mentioned, between the western property line and Applied Parkway right in through here was approved both by Boys Town and the city of Omaha for eighty feet. The area from Davenport North, Applied Parkway East to a Hundred and Forty Fourth Street was approved for up to one hundred and sixty feet, and the area in the center was approved for up to two hundred feet. Those heights came from some experience gained in particular at Exarban Village. We've learned a lot over the last ten or fifteen years about what the marketplace is looking for in terms of floor plate size and height in buildings, and we now know, for example, that a building like the HDR building or the Blue Cross Blue Shield building can be done from within a hundred and sixty feet, and that's where that came from here. In terms of, in the center, the request for two hundred feet, quite frankly, was so that maybe we'll have a chance to do something really special. We don't anticipate necessarily a two-hundred-foot-tall office building, but maybe something with residences, residences in it and/or a hotel. We don't know what that'll be, but that's hopefully a good explanation about height and the public amenities. Terms of trees and landscaping, it's absolutely a true statement that as each individual development project comes in for approval, there's a landscaping plan. The landscaping requirements for this overall development, frankly, are more restrictive than either the Village of Boys Town or the city of Omaha's landscaping requirements were, so we have every intention of adopting those as we go. And then in terms of this area up in here where I believe this gentleman, where are you? I think you live right up in the, in the corner here in the Wycliffe area. We're just following the plans that had been approved, we're trying to do our work out on the site carefully. We apologize for wind and dust. We've done everything we possibly can to water when the grading is being done, and the grading is largely done now, and trying to be a good neighbor. So I can just say to the community, if there are things that are particularly troublesome and specifically affecting someone, you know, we'll do what we can, whatever's reasonable, we'll try to go the extra mile most of the time, but unless we know about it, it's hard to address it, and I think our staff is generally very available.
Chris, did you have a question, or?
Uh, don't have any questions.
Nope, okay. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? We'll hear from Eric with City Planning.
Okay, obviously, this is a large, exciting project, definitely a lot of change for the neighborhood. You know, originally, this West Farm between Pacific and West Dodge, west of a Hundred and Forty Fourth Street, was part of the Village of Boys Town's jurisdiction. While south of Pacific, the South Farm Development came through City Planning Board, City Council here. After approval through the village, West Farm was de-annexed, and that became part of our zoning jurisdiction. Yes, it's not part of the city limits, but for building permits, zoning code requirements, it is part of our zoning jurisdiction. The developer has done many projects around town. Exarban Village was mentioned, very high-quality development, and we're excited about the You know, there is a large timeframe that, that development will occur. You know, the grading, infrastructure, streets, all of that is hopefully going to make great progress here throughout the year, and then we'll see buildings start going up here later this year. Specifically for dust, I know Jay mentioned that, but if there's any, any issues with dust, you can reach out to the city and make sure that the development team is complying with their grading permit. As far as valuation, I, you know, I think a quality project that this type would only elevate the area in assessment valuations of neighboring properties. Was there anything specific you wanted me to address, Chris?
No.
Okay.
I just want to make sure I understand the height. So some of it is two hundred feet, some of it's eighty feet, and that's because it came in as an entitlement from Boys Town.
That is correct. So the original approvals were granted by the Village of Boys Town, so there are development rights that came along with the de-annexation from the village to the city of Omaha. With this request, we're just clarifying and getting it codified to make sure the height, you know, is clearly stated for those areas. If there aren't any other questions, I can go into the city's recommendation. The department recommends approval of the waiver of Section fifty-three dash eight four A for lot depth, approval of the rezoning from R four, R seven, and MU to R four, R seven, and MU, subject to approval of an acceptable final major amendment to the mixed-use district development agreement in compliance with all applicable regulations prior to forwarding the request to city council, and then also approval of the preliminary plat subject to the nine conditions stated in the recommendation report.
Is there a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the waiver of Section fifty-three dash eight four A lot depth, approval of the rezoning from R four, R seven, and MU to R four, R seven, and MU, subject to the approval of an acceptable final major amendment to the mixed-use development, district development agreement in compliance with all applicable regulations prior to forwarding the request to city council, and approval of the preliminary plat subject to the nine conditions in the recommendation.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Ricky, will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes. Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Approved.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Safe flight.
Thanks. We'll next move to agenda item number three. It is case C three dash eighteen dash zero ten. Applicant is Planning Department on behalf of the city of Omaha. Request is approval of the Moxie Hotel Tiff redevelopment project plan. The location is four oh nine South Twelfth Street. May we hear from the city?
Yes, good afternoon. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department. The proposal for the Moxie Hotel, a Tiff redevelopment project plan, it is located on the corner of, southeast corner of Twelfth and Harney. It's in the Old Market, and actually in the Old Market Historic District as well. The project has been before the Landmarks Commission for their review, and the proponents, the developers have made a number of changes to their project. As a response to that review with the Landmarks Commission, they scaled back the height of the building by two floors, reduced the number of rooms, number of minor design compatibility tweaks to get the building to fit into the site and surroundings as well. Ballet parking is proposed. They'll use spaces leased in a nearby parking structure, public parking structure. The hotel will be a Marriott franchise hotel, is what's being proposed at present. The owner, developer, is Hawkeye Hotels, they're out of Coralville, Iowa. They're a pretty experienced group with hotel development, and they have a strong relationship with Marriott. They have about a dozen hotels that are currently under construction or soon to be under construction. Total project cost, put up a couple of renderings of the building as well. Total project cost is fifteen million dollars. The amount of Tiff being requested, Tiff support, is one million, nine hundred thirty-one thousand dollars. That's about thirteen percent of the total project cost. There'll be public improvements totaling approximately two hundred forty-seven, two hundred forty-seven, five thousand dollars. Be sidewalk curbs, gutters, landscaping, planters, landscape corner node. And in addition to the public improvements that they're proposing, they will also be making a voluntary contribution of twenty thousand dollars into the downtown improvement fund. That's a fund that helps improve the public realm downtown, do a variety of things that make it a more pleasant place for people to visit. The project complies with the required criteria of the Tiff program, it's an appropriate land use for the site, and it complies with the goals of the city's master plan.
Any questions? Are there any other proponents? Come on down, sir. If you, you can come forward and take a seat down front if you plan to speak. Make sure you give your name and address.
Raj Patel, three five one Hutchinson Avenue, Iowa City, Iowa. Mr. Chairman and honor, members of the board, I appreciate the ability to be able to come speak with you today. It's humbling to be at this point in our journey here in Omaha because we've been looking at doing a hotel in the city of Omaha for nearly a decade now and have found what we believe to be the exactly right opportunity in downtown Omaha. My family and I have been in the hotel business since before I was born. My mom and dad bought a eighteen-room hotel in Mina, Arkansas, in nineteen eighty-two, and today we own and operate over fifty hotels across the United States, and we've owned and operated over a hundred hotels throughout our history. We're a very experienced operator with Marriott Hilton Intercontinental Hotels, and we're excited to be able to develop a hotel in Omaha because we believe that the city of Omaha, its business ecosystem aligns very well with ours and our company's values, which is hard work, humility, and a strong business ecosystem, as well as strong demand generators here in the city of Omaha that still has room for growth in the hotel space, and we believe we can, you know, be that partner and continue to help Omaha grow in the right We, we do have a good relationship with Marriott and this hotel. The Moxie Hotel will be a professional hotel that, you know, will be a well-appointed hotel in the behavior of the guest would be exactly what you'd expect of a high-paying Marriott guest. We've gone through great lengths to meet and satisfy city requirements as well as the LHPC requirements to go above and beyond, you know, to make this the best fit that we believe possible for the Old Market, along with, you know, the requirements that we've had to bring the height down, take the room count down, and help the facade really fit into that Old Market criteria, which we're excited about. We thought those changes were positive changes, and we're still as thrilled about the project as we were on day one. We believe this to be a good fit for downtown and to achieve maximum economic intensity and increased spending downtown, as well as increased pedestrian flow. I look forward to working on this project in the city of Omaha, and I would urge the board to allow this project to move forward and be a great addition to the downtown Omaha area. Thank you.
Any other proponents?
Jacob Gardner, three one four South Eleventh Street. I'm here representing The Hive, The Gatsby, Market House. I own two restaurants and two bars downtown, and I've got my ear to the ground down there. Everyone's really excited. We've, I've spent a lot of time looking into your group and what you've, what you've accomplished and what you're all about. Our values directly align with each other's. I just, after everything you've said, I just want to say that I, as a representative of four businesses in the market, completely agree and urge the board to also continue to move forward with this however they see fit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Okay, are there any opponents? Come on down, sir. Are there any other opponents that plan to speak? Come on down, sir.
My name is Mark Teva with Iron Decor and More in the Old Market at eleven twenty Jackson Street. We've been in business there about sixteen years, and I've also been a faithful patron of the diner, and I realize, and I'm so grateful for all the growth that we've had in welcoming this hotel in many ways, but I am also a faithful member, as I said, or a faithful patron of the diner and would hate to see that icon go. So I'm looking to the board to table or wait on this until perhaps we could take the diner and put it as a part of the hotel or relocation. The diner, as you know, has been there forty years. Mr. Patel, according to what I read in the Omaha World Herald this past Sunday, and I'll quote him and the statement there, "The company is rehabilitating iconic properties in places such as Des Moines and St. Louis," and I would hope that he could do the same thing for this little diner. Obviously, it sits on a piece of land owned by Mr. Henry. This isn't about Mr. Henry or the tenants that run the diner presently, but it is about preserving and progress, and we want both. We would love to see a hotel on that corner, or I would. That doesn't bother me, but I would also like to preserve the nostalgia of the Old Market as we move forward, and that little piece of history perhaps could be preserved before our plans go forward. Thank you.
Sir, did you wish to speak? In opposition?
Hello, my name's Marty Hosking, seventy-five ten Cass Street. I am opposed to this, at least at this moment in time. I'm excited about a Moxie Hotel, I've read up on those, I'm excited about development in Omaha. I moved back to Omaha from Washington, DC for the purpose of helping Omaha develop. I'm learning, I'm earning my wings. It's hard to move into, back into a city and to be known and to do the things that I want to do without the money that I want to have to do them. At the same time, I'm very interested in the development of downtown as a residential home for a community, and I think that I've spoken previously here with regard to the Douglas, Eleventh and Douglas Street development, or the changes that were going to be made there to those existing buildings. I think that we tend to overlook the importance of the development of residential living, that we have, we do not have, we just lost a grocery store, and we're in severe need of an infrastructure down there that can support people actually living there. I'm a real estate agent, and one of the biggest issues that I'm confronting with properties that I have listed downtown is that it's not quite livable yet, and how long have we been after something like this? My hat's off to Chris Christensen for his development down there, but I don't believe that we've really fully supported what is already there. And so when we talk about putting another hotel in, we have to consider some of the three basic areas that I'm concerned the three basic areas that I'm concerned about is the soul of a community, the community's soul. We have to consider the culture that's developing there and we have to consider then if people are going to actually be living there, how are we supporting that? We all know that the trends across the United States and specifically in Washington DC are toward residential living in urban situations. We're talking about some transportation options and I think that's great, but if we're just to be a suburban-oriented city with people coming downtown for fun, that does not have a sustainable prognosis for the future. For to attract more millennials, we need more than just a hotel that they're going to stay at. Clearly it's aimed at millennials and that's great. We need millennials down there who are willing to live there and I know a number of them who want to, but it's very difficult to sustain living residentially down there as you would and make it a home. That's why we were defending the buildings on Eleventh and Douglas because it's elements like that, architectural elements that add to the soul of a community and the culture of a community. The hotel idea is great, but I would also posit that it's redundant. We've already talked about the landmark building being a home for a boutique hotel and I understand that the occupancy rates are not blowing the top off the Old Market in the hotels that we currently have. So I would argue that this might be more for the benefit of Mr. Patel than for the city. I'm all, I want to welcome Mr. Patel to the city and I'm welcoming him to the development in the city, but this is very premature. So I, what I want to do is, as, as the previous guy said, I want to put the brakes on it or at least slow down the process here so we can really consider the cost of this to our city as opposed to what it might benefit Mr. Patel and his family. He talked about humble values. I read and I Googled Mr. Patel and it's anything but humble values that I was able to ascertain from some of the reviews from one particular hotel that was a whole-page review of what was the most shocking review I've ever read on TripAdvisor and I keep a pretty good tabs on it as to how this particular guest was treated. I think it speaks to the character of the family and it speaks to the character of Mr. Patel.
Sir, if you can keep it, maybe move it up a level if you would and not the criticism of the applicant.
I think this, let me tell you why that's important because when we're trying to develop a community, we need to know that the people that we're including in our community, who are investing in our community, are people who actually are what they say they're going to be. And there is a contradiction here and I encourage you to look that up. I will move on.
Okay, let's just leave it at that.
I will move on.
Thank you.
So, my point is, the values that he ascertains are not, are not aligned with what he claims and what we, what we're going to see. There's a redundancy here and finally, and then the, the community aspect and the soul of the community and residential development is going to be negatively affected by this and slowed, really it's going to miss, it's a missed opportunity is what it is to develop what we need to develop in that area and we need more residential than hotel. And then finally, what I wanted to say, a previous speaker had said with regard to the diner itself. The diner is, was a development of two gentlemen whom I know, developed that from nothing to something that ranks very highly on TripAdvisor. They built that up with blood, sweat, and tears with their own money, much of it was. I understand that they're renting, they were renting the place, they're leasing it, but what they developed there was community for an area, for the residents, people who actually live in the community. That was a community center for them for entertainment, but for recreation and for people who visited from around the country. This was a destination for many people to so swiftly move, remove it and as Mr. Patel said, destroy completely what is ever there, what was there previously, or demolish, I think is the word he used. I think is sort of disrespectful of the meaning of the place. I understand that he would have a right to demolish it, but even that, that word is pretty strong when we're talking about something that speaks to the soul and the culture of our city, something so important and iconic as the diner. It is in itself historic. You might say it's not on the Historic Register, but it is historic and I think we'd all agree that it speaks to the culture of our city. To remove something like that and to have a sterile hotel that's a franchise from around across, it takes away much of the meaning that we could have. So what I would say is, I would like to encourage us to slow this down, look at it more carefully, understand redundancy that might be occurring there and to see what benefit we really get out of this. And possibly if we were to go forward with Mr. Patel's project, that he would be required to help us in some fashion to move the diner and the community that, that gathers there to a place that would benefit the Old Market at another location near there. So that's what, that's what I'd like to propose and that's what I'd like to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any others opposed? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Don, did you have any, anything further to add?
I have no questions.
Any questions of the city?
Yes, I've got a couple, so.
Don, will you come up?
Well, either for Don or Mr. Patel, either one, so it, it, there was a, there's a, Marriott just recently opened another hotel very close to this one as well. So the question I have is, does Marriott Corporate have to approve these plans and if so, have they done that?
Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. I'm going to defer to the developer on this one.
Hi, Raj Patel, Hawkeye Hotels. Marriott has formally approved this project in its current state. They had approved it when it was eight stories and they've now re-approved it at the six-story height as well.
Because it's different concept than the other Marriott hotel?
Correct, yeah, it's a different concept, caters to a different guest and the, the occupancy and average daily rate metrics of the city do support an additional hotel.
Is this a full-service hotel?
It is not.
It is not?
It is limited service.
Limited service?
Correct. And I'm able to respond to those previous comments as well if you'd like.
Please. Yes, please do.
The, in regards to the diner, you know, I absolutely understand the emotion behind the diner and what the City of Omaha and more than anybody, the owners of the diner, feel about that space and I had a really good productive conversation with owner, the owner of the diner, today Ken. And he, you know, we, we spoke at length about the project and I think he, multiple times he said on the phone that, you know, nobody's done anything wrong here, this is the situation. He had the opportunity to buy the site, but it's just not feasibly possible for the owner of the diner to purchase that site at that price and meet the debt cover. My statement in terms of the, what would be left on the site is just simply stating that I would love for the diner owners and Ken or whomever have, who have the ability to relocate the diner, take anything from that site and able to continue that legacy and relive, you know, the diner elsewhere because all that's going to happen with us is whatever's left on site will be ultimately removed. So I meant no disrespect by that. And in terms of the, the comment about the online review, there's actually two thousand Patels across the United States of America who own hotels and of those, about fifty have the name Raj Patel, so it's very, very common and that's kind of a interesting caveat of the hotel industry, which I'd love to get into more, but that's not why we're here. So, but any other questions?
Yeah, Raj, if, if this gets approved, what's the timeline for the process of either allowing the diner to move or to be relocated or construction startup for, for your company?
So we would close on the site end of April. From there, the conversation I had with the diner owners is we would want to be flexible with them on, I know they'd like to stay open through some of the busy time in the World Series, so we'd be flexible with them on how long they can stay open. We ultimately would hope to start construction mid or end of the summer and the diner be able to, you know, continue operations through that time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Eric, can we hear from the City Planning Department?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, we would encourage the property owner to, you know, or the applicant to work with the current tenant on, on possibilities of finding relocation, but we do recommend approval of the request.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ricky, will you please record the vote?
Kate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number six. It's case C ten dash eighteen dash zero seventeen, C twelve dash eighteen dash zero eighteen. Applicant is ABG-CFM two hundred and fourth Q LLC care of J.F. Carter. Request is revised preliminary plat approval of Coventry North, a subdivision outside the city limits with rezoning from AG and MU to MU and final plat approval of Coventry North Lot One, a subdivision outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to MU along with a major amendment to the mixed-use district development agreement for Coventry North. Location southwest of two hundred and fourth and Q Streets. May we hear from the representative of the applicant?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, Larry Jovan, one hundred and fourteen forty West Center Road appearing on behalf of the applicant. With me today, from the applicant is J.F. Carter and Ty Fangman. Also with me today is John Bach and Ben Calhorn of America First who are doing the apartment project on the final plat property that is before you today as well. And also I have Kevin Sessi and Katie Underwood of Olson Associates, the consulting engineers on this particular project. So what this is, is on the southwest corner of two hundred and fourth and Q, it's, consists of about forty-five acres that the preliminary plat is comprised of thirteen lots within that forty-five acres. This shows the revised preliminary plat. I've outlined what is the final plat or Lot One, Coventry North, as far as overlaying the, the site plan on this particular site. So here's the final plat which shows the multifamily area and that is about sixteen point seven eight acres. There are two hundred ninety-four units for a density of about seventeen point five units per acre. The rest of the development will be in subsequent phases, but the first phase will be as part of this final plat in this apartment here. This is essentially the same site plan that many of you saw on one hundred and fifty-sixth and Ida on the vantage of Stone Creek, so it's got the clubhouse, it's got two hundred ninety-four units, it's comprised of two-story, three-story structures, it's got a clubhouse, swimming pool, and it's gated with wrought iron, so it's a very nice product as far as the multifamily use. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, two hundred and fourth and Q Street, if you don't know, is a one hundred and sixty-five acre mixed-use center, so it's the largest mixed-use center that our master plan calls for, so this is consistent with that as well. Again, we're all here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you. Oh, and we have reviewed the recommendation report and find the same acceptable.
Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Are there any questions from the board before we hear from the city? Eric, can we hear the city's recommendation?
Sure. So this revised preliminary plat is for thirteen lots. Final plat is for the apartment complex. There are a few items that we need to work out with the mixed-use development agreement and, and normal plating items, but the department recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to, and MU to MU, subject to submittal of an acceptable major amendment to the mixed-use district development agreement in compliance with all applicable regulations prior to forwarding the request to city council. Approval of the revised preliminary plat, subject to the eleven conditions stated in the recommendation report and approval of the final plat of Coventry North Lot One, subject to addressing the applicable conditions relative to that phase of the approved revised preliminary plat and subject, and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding to city council for final action.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move approval of the rezoning from AG and MU to MU, subject to the submittal of an acceptable major amendment to the mixed-use district development agreement in compliance with all applicable regulations prior to forwarding the request to city council. Approval of the revised preliminary plat, subject to the eleven conditions outlined in the recommendations by the planning department and then approval of the final plat of Coventry North Lot One, subject to addressing the applicable conditions of the approved revised preliminary plat and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding this request onto city council for final action.
We have a motion and a second. Ricky, will you please record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay. Our final agenda item today is number eleven. It is case C eight dash eighteen dash zero two one, C ten dash eighteen dash zero two two. Applicant is Carolina Padilla. Request approval of a special use permit to allow personal improvement services in a GI district along with approval of a MCC major commercial corridor overlay district. Location is fifty-five forty-five Center Street. Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, my name is Lana Bayless. I'm with DLR Group, sixty-four fifty-seven Francis Street, here representing the applicant, the Intercultural Senior Center, so. In case you want to look at the plan. We're requesting a special use to allow personal improvement services in an existing building at fifty-five forty-five Center Street. The Intercultural Senior Center is currently co-located with the YMCA at thirtieth and R Street and they've outgrown the available space that they have. The Intercultural Senior Center is a service to elderly, multi, or multi, I want to say disciplinary, but it's not generational and different ethnicities, I guess, let's say that. And so it, it serves a really great service to the community and I think, I'm excited to work on the project is just because I know the benefit that it has for us. And the site, it's, it's an existing building that we're trying to renovate and serve their needs and the site is constricting in and of itself, so we're trying to do as much as we can to make sure that the site is compliant with as much of the zoning regulations as we can. I think we have, we have reviewed the department's recommendation report. I know there's probably some questions, so I'm basically here to answer any questions that you as the board may have at this time.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Are there any proponents, any further proponents? Are there any opponents? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. If there's no further questions, I'll get the recommendation of the planning department. Eric?
Sure. This is a challenging site with some of the access and, you know, complete building and impervious coverage that sits there now. The proposed special use permit would try to bring into compliance the site as much as feasibly possible. There will be some waivers needed from the zoning board of appeals. We're going to work with the applicant to, to clearly identify all those waivers, make sure we have the proper plans in place to establish what those are. We are recommending approval of the MCC major commercial corridor overlay district and approval of the special use permit to allow personal improvement services in a GI general industrial district, subject to the eleven conditions stated in your recommendation report.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to, for the approval of the MCC major commercial corridor overlay district and approval of the special use permit to allow personal improvement services in a GI general industrial district, subject to the eleven items noted in the department park.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Ricky, will you please record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for coming down. Let's make a motion for the minutes before we go on to the election. We have the minutes from last month's meeting.
I move for approval of the minutes from the January third, two thousand and eighteen meeting.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ricky, will you record the vote?
Megan?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Megan?
Okay, yes.
Yes.
Okay, for vice chair, do we have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to nominate Chris Carnes as vice chair for planning board.
Second.
Ricky, we have a motion and a second. Will you please record the? Second. We have a motion and a second. Ricky, will you record the vote?
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Yes.
Megan?
Okay, yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay, for vice chair, do we have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to nominate Chris Carnes as vice chair for the planning board.
Second. Ricky, we have a motion and a second. Will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Orange?
Yes.
Megan?
Sure.
Rosacker?
Dave?
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a motion for adjournment?
So move.
Yes, all of them.
Ricky, will you record the vote, please?
Kate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Orange?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a motion for adjournment?
So move.
Yes, all of them.
Ricky, will you record the vote, please?
Kate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Orange?
Yes.
Kate?[1793.41]